Council chambers will come to order. It is 7:00 PM. And we will convene our council meeting Tuesday, February the 12th, 2019. I do have an announcement that Councilmember Kurtz has a business engagement tonight. He should be here later. And also, when we get to item 15, he has a business conflict and would recuse himself. So if you see that, you'll understand what's going on with related to that. And Councilmember Fleury, as far as I knew, was going to be here tonight, but I don't see her. So we do have a quorum. And in just a minute, I'll ask everybody to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by our Town Secretary Holly Fimbres. And afterwards, be led in the pledges by Councilmember Jensen. Would you please stand?
You would please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this time together and for the blessings in our lives. Please watch over the decisions that are made tonight and help bring cohesion. Please protect our residents, volunteers, council, firefighters, and officers. In your sweet, loving name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So if some of you were looking at us going, well, why aren't we facing the flags, which are behind us? There are flags on the back right that are there for photo ops and also to where we don't have to turn our backs to you as you're saying the pledge. So it does look a little strange, and I see everybody kind of going, moving their head around going, how come these guys aren't facing the flags? But that's the reason. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So we do have one person who signed up to speak during citizens' presentations, and that's Ron Yasely. Ron, you want to come forward, state your name and your address? He is going to talk about a topic later, but he has to go back home to be with his wife, so he's just going to talk.
Yes, my name's Ron Yasely. I live at 224 Fresh Meadow Trophy Club. What I want to address today is, all we hear today is garage this, garage that, garage. Everything is garages. Everybody wants, hey, he's getting a garage, I want one. We're having to change codes because way back in 19, in the middle of 1975, the greatest golfer that ever played the game, Ben Hogan, he developed a golf course right here in Trophy Club at that point in time. And it skyrocketed. It took this golf community from the basement and put it in the penthouse right there. It was such an asset. Every golfer in the area, when they found out that Ben Hogan had this golf course, they, all these golfers wanted to play the Hogan. And so this area started growing leaps and bounds until the middle of the 1980s. Oh, they started building these apartment buildings here. They said, hey, hey, no, no way, we're not going to allow that. Formed the city at that time, pardon me, the town, Trophy Club became the town in 1985. And how did they name this town? Okay, Ben Hogan was going to put his, all of his trophies up at the club. He helped sign that at that time, if you remember. But he put his trophies at the club. They said, my God, trophy, let's name this town Trophy Club. And they have, and it is today. That's the history. Moving forward now, 44 years from then to right now, one of the criteria at that point was that if you were going to build a home on, at the Trophy Club, in the Hogan Golf Course, you could not have a garage that faced the city, that faced the golf course. You could not have a garage that faced the street in the front. Okay? Everybody wants garages, they say, he wants one, I want one. Everybody wants a garage. But they don't under, I have a feeling that people really don't understand the legacy of Ben Hogan that he left, the legacy. Now, I live at Fresh Meadow. The area of Seminole and Fresh Meadow surrounded by the Trophy Club Golf Club, Golf Course. If, if, if that was a river, we'd be an island right there. Not one home in that, in the last 44 years has violated that code. Well, there was one, it had special permission years ago because it had a city street on one side and another city street on the other side. So Seminole and Fresh Meadow came together in that northeast corner. They gave special permissions as long as they built the garages that did not face the golf course. Other than that, there's approximately 60-plus homes in that area. And I think on your agenda today, you are going to address this somewhere. I'm asking, please, at that point, do not start changing these codes. I, I think what's happening here is, we're 44 years after all this Hogan built, this Hogan Golf Course. I think there's so many people have changed, I don't think people really are aware that when they ask for, I want a, I want a garage, and it's, and the only place I can put it is going to have to face, and I want a special code change because it's going to face the street. I don't think people realize they're destroying the legacy that, that, that was earned at that point. And I think if we keep doing that, we're going to fall right out of that high level in, and, and fall right back down into the basement because it's going to destroy everything. So that's my point. I'm saying, when you vote, please don't approve these code changes. Don't approve them now, don't approve them later, ever. What I would suggest, maybe the town manager could, could address the, I think what we have is the issue here of, people just don't understand that when they ask for, for a garage and it's going to face the street and they're going to ask for a code, I don't think they realize they're destroying this legacy, legacy that we've had for all these years. So I would ask the town manager, probably, why, why appoint somebody? Let's, let's, let's make, let's make a list of everything that's important about all this legacy. And maybe all the people that, that are around that make these changes, these code changes, will understand that they're destroying what was built up in this community. And so I'm asking you, don't, don't approve the code changes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Teasley.
All right. I, I don't know if I've used up my four minutes ago, but I have a lot more to say. I mean, there's so much to know about, about that legacy and about this great man, his name, Ben Hogan, the greatest golfer that we've ever seen, that ever played the game. He is, and he is, he would probably be voted dead today. He's been dead over 20 years. He died September 25th, 1997. He was born in 1912, August 1912, but I can tell you who he married.
Thank you, Mr. Teasley.
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Thank you all. Please vote that way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are down to announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager class's update and provide input regarding the following: the May 4th general and special election, the communication process, and the Loop Road. Mr. Class?
Mayor and council, good evening. Filing period for placement on the May 4th general election ballot for Councilmember Place Number Five and Councilmember Place Number Six on the Trophy Club Town Council ends 5:00 PM on February 15th. The filing period for placement on the May 4th special election ballot for Councilmember Place Three on the Trophy Club Town Council ends at 5:00 PM on March 4th. And applications can be obtained through the Town Secretary Holly Fimbres. Additionally, early voting for the February 23rd special election has begun and ends on February 19th. Election Day will be on February 23rd, and the polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at Trophy Club Town Hall. Based upon a request from council, I believe a few meetings ago, beginning tomorrow, staff will be posting on the town's website a summary of the town's council's actions from each meeting. Just as a reminder, the summary is not intended to serve as official minutes for the meeting, but to serve as a report of actions by town council on certain agenda items, on all agenda items. And then, I've been requested to do a comprehensive report on the status of the Loop Road, which I know is of great interest to council. And if you'll bear with me, I'd like to present that to you now. As council is aware, the concept of the Loop Road for Trophy Club has been in existence since the town's formation, and in fact, was first noted in the original Grapevine Lake Master Plan of 1971, is amended in 2001. Since that time, previous town councils have on-again, off-again looked into the feasibility of the road from public safety and convenience, logistical and financial perspectives without any resolution. A significant setback for the Loop Road occurred in 2001 with the adoption of the revised Grapevine Lake Master Plan, which was a supplement to the original plan of 1971. The revised plan identified environmentally sensitive areas for the purpose of minimizing the number of future easements granted. In early 2014, there appeared to be a renewed interest in determining the feasibility of the Loop Road from the town council. And in fact, an engineering study was completed for a low-water elevated bridge crossing. The projected engineering costs and construction costs at that time was $5.3 million, and shortly thereafter, discussions began in earnest with the Army Corps of Engineers to secure easements for the road. The Loop Road proposal was dealt a significant blow in December 2014 when the town received an official denial letter from the Corps citing federal restrictions on granting easements within designated ESAs. Following the denial, very little, if any, follow-up was conducted until I re-engaged with the Corps of Engineers in mid-2017. Since that time, I've been in frequent personal contact with the Corps of Engineers Grapevine Lake Manager and have held four meetings with Corps staff in an effort to seek some resolution on the easement issue. In November 2017, I met with Corps officials to further discuss the Loop Road, determine if anything, regulatory or otherwise, had changed from the Corps perspective, and to determine what options were available in moving forward with an appeal. At the meeting, Corps officials confirmed the master plan remained in effect, and there were no post-2014 changes to the ESA designation that would favorably impact Trophy Club's requests for the Loop Road. Corps officials also confirmed the following restrictions were still in place for easement requests. Number one, requests would only be granted when no practical alternative existed. Number two, requests must have the least identifiable environmental and visual impact. And number three, requests must consider routing the easement to adjacent lands outside the EFA when, I'm sorry, the ESA when possible. In addition, Corps officials placed yet another hurdle in front of the town, that being the requirement to prove the following demonstrated needs for construction of the road. Number one, whether the proposed roadway traversed multiple jurisdictions and qualified as a regional arterial. And number two, whether a demonstrated public safety need existed. I was never able to adequately overcome these hurdles, and accordingly, and according to Corps officials, a successful appeal of the decision was highly unlikely. Despite this opinion, the town attorney submitted an appeal, and I engaged the Office of United States Congressman Michael Burgess, who later requested an inquiry into the matter on the town's behalf. This past November, the town attorney and I again met with Corps officials representing the legal, real estate, recreation, and environmental divisions regarding the appeal and congressional inquiry. Each division official had an individual perspective on the Loop Road, but none were in support of granting access for construction. The collective position remained that the proposed Loop Road was not in alignment with established environmental policies, and additionally, was not compliant with the Corps' current road policy and non-recreational outgrant policy. And although the response of the congressional inquiry referenced three potential alternatives in seeking a compromise, all were soon dismissed by Corps officials. Additionally, the same officials revealed other potential obstacles such as, number one, construction of the Loop Road would now require heightened environmental approvals from not only the Corps, but also from the EPA because Trophy Club and Marshall Creek were now considered a high-value quality habitat based on the existence of rare bottomland hardwoods. Number two, construction would also require an EPA 404 permit under the Clean Water Act, separate from any considerations of the Corps. The 404 permit requires mitigation for fill dirt brought into wetlands and is in addition to the Corps tree mitigation requirements. Additionally, the town would have to demonstrate that construction met a least environmentally damaging practical alternative standard set by yet another federal authority outside of the EPA. Number three, Corps officials also suggested that other unknown environmental issues could easily be discovered as part of the review process by not only the Corps, not only the EPA, but even by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Number four, Corps officials questioned whether additional easements could be granted or either, or even whether existing easements could be expanded from the typical 15 feet to the 80 feet required for road construction, citing a relatively new requirement that boring of pipelines so as not to disturb existing ESA ecosystems. And then lastly, number five, the Corps officials questioned whether any potential easement would fit with recreational purposes of the habitat, whether an easement would interfere with the primary flood control purpose of the lake, or whether conveyance of an easement for the Loop Road would ultimately require congressional approval. I've also received updated projections from the town's engineering firm, which indicate the cost of the Loop Road has risen from $5.3 million in 2014 to $7.1 million in 2019, and would be expected to rise to $9.5 million within five years and $12.7 million within 10 years. Issuance of a GO bond, which would require voter approval, would potentially result in a corresponding two and a half to three and a half cent increase to the town's INS rate. Engineering, construction, and finance costs aside, the town attorney has made it clear from a legal standpoint that further litigation would take an extensive effort, be protracted and expensive, and in all likelihood, would not be successful, given the consistent feedback from Corps officials beginning in 2014 and ending as recently as November 2018 with the appeal and congressional inquiry follow-up meeting. In conclusion, it's clear to me from every interaction with Corps officials that the established multi-agency federal review process can and will be used to thwart any attempt the town makes to secure approval for the Loop Road, and that any continued effort on the town's part will be determined by federal authorities to lack merit. And with that, I'd be happy to take questions.
So did you have other diagrams you were going to show us, or was that the only one?
No, this is just the, the last proposal of the Loop Road that's, we were trying to work with the Corps on.
All right. Council, anybody have any questions? Any citizens have any questions? Greg, I'm sorry.
It's just, Tom, just walk us through if we did want to go and purchase land, how difficult then, what would the land be?
Well, we spoke specifically with the Corps. The issue there is that they don't sell the land. They would consider a trade for our land, but they made it clear to us that Trophy Club has no land that would be adjacent to the Corps property that would be any value to them.
So the only land that's somewhat available is country club land? And the path of the road would have to go up along that border? And of course, Country Club is now owned by Club Corp., so who knows what would ever happen in that endeavor? And it would take away driving range space and other things?
And, and I did engage with the club representatives, and essentially, they provided the same information, which was, anything that would disturb the integrity of the Corps, be very, highly unlikely that we would receive any kind of approval to use our land.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Item number two, receive an update regarding kindness awareness events and the 2019 March of Dimes March for Babies campaign event. Alicia, you're going to update us on the kindness awareness event.
Yes. Welcome, everyone. So nice to see our chamber full of our citizens this evening, and welcome to those of you watching online. I see a few of you on Facebook there. Our second annual campaign for kindness has started off really great with presentations already being held at Byron Nelson High School and Beck Elementary School and by the House of Shine. Those were really very well accepted by the students and the faculty at those schools. And we are hosting more presentations at Medlin Middle School next week and also Lakeview Elementary at the end of the month. One of the programs we are doing with this campaign is the Yellow Envelope Project, and that is a traveling mailbox that's hitting all of our schools as well as different businesses throughout our town on the weekend. And internally for the schools, those are for the kids to write a letter, like an actual letter, not a text, not an email, not a FaceTime, but an actual letter, which many kids have never written a letter. They don't know how to address an envelope. So they're writing an actual letter to a fellow student or anyone at the school, whether it's a custodian, a teacher, an admin, anyone they choose, very specifically to thank them or to recognize something kind about that person, something easy. Hi, Joanne, it was so nice when you smiled at me at lunch today. Just very specific things about a specific person at the school. And those will be delivered internally. And on the weekend, the first weekend, it was at Marco's Pizza, and those letters could be mailed to anyone in the world that you'd like. Or if you wanted to, you could address it to a deployed troop, and it would be delivered to one of our deployed servicemen members overseas. So that's the global aspect of it. Pretty successful weekend there. Marco's is also offering 10% off your order if you go there and mail a letter at no cost. We provide the cards, the envelopes, all you do is write a kind note, drop it in the mailbox, and bring some joy to someone's life and get 10% off. And even though the mailbox is not there, he is continuing that special throughout the month, I believe. This week, the mailbox is at Byron Nelson High School. We had a lovely presentation there where seven students were chosen to share a story of how they overcame adversity, and it was very amazing. We had students talk about everything from coming out to their parents to losing a parent. So it was a very powerful message given at Byron Nelson High School. And those kids were the student leaders of that community, and they will be going out and spreading those messages throughout the campus, and the mailbox is there for the letters as well. And then this weekend, it will be traveling to the Trophy Club 7-Eleven. And Shondrika there, she has donated $700 from 7-Eleven to help fund the presentation that we had at Byron Nelson High School. So we really thank our 7-Eleven for that. So residents are welcome to please drop by the 7-Eleven and, and drop a letter or card in the mailbox. And then it will be at Medlin the following week, and Tom thumb that weekend, and then Lakeview Elementary School, and then here at Town Hall. So the mailbox will be traveling throughout our town, so everyone is encouraged to participate. Also, on February 23rd, we are having our Fund Run for Kindness again, and that will start at Byron Nelson High School at 8:00 AM in the morning. And thank you, Captain, over there for helping us put that together. I know I was a little last-minute Lucy there, so thank you for working with us, getting that together. I really appreciate it. So if you could encourage anyone to run, walk, or just come on by and say hello and drop a letter in the mailbox, that would be much appreciated. We'll have March of Dimes out there, also spreading awareness of their upcoming march in, I believe, April 13th. Also, Run Ranger Run and Gallant Few representatives will be there as well to talk about what they're doing this month. And also Jogging for Joseph, which of course is in memory of that sweet little boy that succumbed to congenital heart defect. And they are raising awareness for that cause. So come on out and say hello to those guys and show them your support and spread some kindness on February 23rd. To, am I doing March of Dimes as well right now, or is that later? Is that?
I was going to do that.
You're going to do that? Okay, well, Mayor Nick will talk about March of Dimes, but they will be out there as well for February 23rd. So for those of you out there watching and those of you here, if you have kids in school, ask them how, what they thought about the Shine for Kindness presentations that they're seeing in their schools, and ask what they're doing. And there will be a video links available at the end of the month, so you can actually see the presentations that they were a part of. And if you're out and about in the town, please drop by, put a nice note in the mailbox to a friend, a family member, or a service member. We'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Just to reiterate, March of Dimes will be out at our Fund Run event, allowing people to sign up to participate in the March or Walk for the Babies, April 13th in downtown Fort Worth. And so I'm encouraging you to put together teams, get pledges. A lot of the people I see in the audience probably used to get little cards when they were children and walk door-to-door and put dimes in them. Do you remember doing that? Anybody that doesn't remember that is too young to probably remember that, right? So we don't have little cards with dimes anymore, but you can ask people to make a pledge for you to walk the three miles across the bridge downtown Fort Worth and raise money for that and awareness for that. You can find out more information online at the MarchForBabies.org on the website. All right, moving on. Thank you, Alicia, for updating and coordinating those things. Item number three, receive town council liaison updates. Discussion of same, Park and Recreation Board. And Councilmember Fleury, you're the council liaison. They had a meeting on January 21st.
Wow, this is the most I've had to talk during a meeting, huh? Park update, well, I hope I don't cause a ruckus like I did last time. But speaking of the cameras, though, I do want to give a little shout-out to Chief Arata and his officers for getting our cameras up and running so quickly and getting them online and doing what they're supposed to do, because I'm sure you've all heard, we did have an arrest there recently. And there's been some chatter about it just being, you know, a couple guys smoking weed at the dog park. Well, that's not what it was. It was actually a convicted felon who was armed and had enough candies, gummies, cereal laced with THC, targeting our children. So that's a big no-no, and that's especially heinous, being that it's targeted towards children. And there's an actual task force, a federal task force, so that actually has moved on to the DEA on a federal level, federal case. So kudos to you and your officers for catching that and the cameras being up and operational and being integral in that arrest. So great job there. Other things that we discussed at our meeting, as you see around town, there's a lot of pruning of our tree canopies and major cleanup this time of year, trailhead cleanup at the TW-King intersection. We finally got that ADA swing installed at the Dino Playground, so that is a great addition to our parks. We are going to order new disc golf signs. Those will be installed by staff coming up. Our Christmas in the park, even though we had to move it inside to Byron Nelson, was very successful. And our Ginger Bread House had 40 participants, it was really full, so we may not, may need to add more slots here, Tony, for, for next year. That was very popular. And the one thing I missed that I really wanted to attend was the goat yoga. That was completely sold out as well with 80 participants, so I'm hoping that will be another thing that we start doing regularly, because I heard that was a lot of fun. What's not to love about little goats running around? The action items, we voted on renaming the current Bobcat Trail in Trophy Club Park Whitetail Trail and naming the North Linear Trail Bobcat Trail. That would be brought to us at council for approval in the near future. And we did start removing the Bradford Pear trees on Trophy Lake Drive medians and on the median Indian Creek between Trune and Forest Hill. That project has been completed, and they're going to start landscaping those medians within the next several weeks. So lots of cleanup, lots of pruning, lots of beautifying going on in our community and fun stuff for the community that, that we're working on. And also, pool season is coming up, and we do have job listings out there for camp staff and lifeguards. So if you've got kids, 16 or older, we'd love to have them come and, and join us here and participate in our summer activities here for our kids in the community. And I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions on that or comments? Seeing no one seeking the chair, we will then move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items four through 14 from the consent agenda? Hearing no one. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed, the consent agenda, and will be considered separately. Do I have someone wishing to move approval of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items four through 14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Mayor Protem Schaffner, a second by Lamont. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. He thought it was long. See, we just did all of those in one pass. All right. Item number 15, consider and take appropriate action to amend economic development agreements with OTDTC LLC and authorize the mayor his designated to execute all necessary documents. So Financial Services Manager Phillips will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm going to go through a brief background and a couple of notes from the staff report on this item. Then we have the developer and the operator, who I believe are going to make a brief presentation following my background. The strategic link to this item is to, is the exercise fiscal discipline in all town operations. As councils aware, back in January of 2015, the town entered with the TERS, the Tax Increment Pre-Investment Zone, and the Economic Development Corporation 4B entered into a 380 agreement with Old Town Development. The EDC 4B agreed to pay $140,000, over $140,000 annually, not to exceed $1.064 million. And TERS agreed to pay $1 million in reimbursement for public improvements plus interest costs on those improvements. Excuse me. The developer for these incentives was to obtain two executed restaurant leases within 24 months of the agreement. And then within 36 months, they were to obtain two certificates of occupancy or COs for the two restaurants on the property. That original agreement term date was January 22nd, 2018. Since that original agreement, two extensions to the CO date have been granted, one extending it to November 22nd of 2018, and then the most recent extends at March 22nd of this year, 2019. Financial considerations of the agreement, so far to date, EDC 4B has paid out $569,000, a little over $569,000 out of the $1.064 million. And TERS has paid out a total of $751,000 out of the $1 million. The total remaining incentive left to be paid to date is $744,205.19. Another financial consideration is based on the current agreement with the March 22nd deadline, the town did forecast six months of operation of HG Supply within this fiscal year budget. This item was brought to EDC 4B and TERS at a joint meeting on January 29th. Both boards considered the original proposal of extending the date to December 31st, 2019, but amended that proposal to May 31st of 2019. Following that amendment, both boards approved the amendment unanimously. Counsel, you're aware of your options. You can consider the amendment as presented. You could renegotiate the agreement or you could leave the agreement as is with the March 22nd, 2019 termination date.
So Jonathan, I have a question for you. Would you explain for the citizens, I think all of the council understand this, but for those watching or in the audience, where does the money come from to accomplish this task?
Well, it comes from two funding sources primarily. You have the EDC, which is a portion of the sales tax. And then you have the TERS, which is the actual property tax and the investment within the district.
So the TERS is an incremental property tax. Right. So when the TERS was established, you had a base. And then all incremental above that allows us to use that money for development?
Yes, within that district, yes.
Within that district. All right. So before I move on to OTD making a presentation, Counsel, if you have any questions of what Jonathan asked. Whoops, it just went off. Eric, did you have something?
No.
He took it off?
Okay.
It flashed real quick on the screen. All right. So at this time, I would then, was OTD going to make the next presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Chris and Justin, you want to come forward and do that?
Yep. Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a brief summary in three parts tonight. Sort of have context. It's my job. I'm going to do context and possibly comedic. By the way, my name is Justin Springfield. This is Chris Gordon. We are Old Town Development. This is Elias Pope, who is the owner and operator of HG Supply, Gung Ho Standard Service, Hero.
And HG Supply.
And HG Supply, yeah. So.
Thank you.
We both live in Trophy Club, by the way. Do you need our full address?
I've been here since 2001. Chris.
2009, 2007.
2009.
Thank you.
So Chris and I started, a lot of y'all might not remember, when Roanoke didn't have sidewalks and Highway 114 had stoplights and it was a divided highway. And we started kicking around out here trying to find some land to develop. And we wound up getting involved with the city of Roanoke and doing a project in Roanoke. Chris and I found a hamburger stand down in Deep Ellum called Twisted Root Burger and sold our dream to the owner and operator of it. Together with the city, we put together a proposal and were able to compel him to come to Roanoke. And that kicked off the beginning of their entire downtown revitalization. Since then, we've done four more restaurants, including Hard Eight Barbecue and Chop Shop, the music venue in the city of Roanoke. And at that time, we had no idea that that would become our business model. Other EDC directors, other towns started recruiting us to come work with them to catalyze areas where they had opportunities for development, opportunities for improvement. And everybody wanted to broaden their retail sales tax base. And a great way to do that is by attracting restaurants. While we were working in Flower Mound and Roanoke and Lewisville, we were driving by this site out here because we live in Trophy Club. We really started talking about how cool it might be to do a project in our hometown. And the property at Trophy Wood was described to me several times by the broker that had it listed as either blighted or a tertiary property that was zoned for general commercial. And the only inquiries that the city were getting for that property at the time had to do with either a motel use or possibly mini storage. And I got lots of horror stories from the broker that had it listed by what the national tenants that he was recruiting, the Texas Roadhouses, the Chili's, what they, the kind of feedback they were getting him about the site. But what Chris and I have always done is focused on the operator and tried to bring in a use that is a destination type use and that will make somebody want to go out of their way to an area that might not be ideal in terms of access or visibility. But the look and the feel and the experience that you get based on the restaurant, based on the operator would bring people there. So we started talking to the previous iteration of this council, some of the guys are still here, about how we could possibly work together to do that. And in 2014, we put together the framework of a developer agreement. And there were some certain items in place that we were going to work together on. And we, the first tenant that we collectively identified and went after was Breadwinners. And we were able to attract Breadwinners and turn that into a really great project. And when we got Elias out here, again, trying to sell him the dream, we had a property that was incredibly challenging because when the initial developer agreement was signed, the property in front of the Hampton Inn, because of the easements and the power lines and the setbacks, was going to allow us to build a building about 3,500 square feet. And Elias's feedback was, I don't want to, I'm not coming out here to build an HG Supply guys. You know, I mean, you gotta, if you want me to come out to the suburbs and take a chance, I mean, we really got to do something special. You know, I want this, you know, mixed-use experiential indoor-outdoor patio with three restaurants and two bars and a coffee shop and flexible meeting space. And we're going, wow, I mean, this is great. We'd love to do this. We talked to the city about it. The city wanted to do it. So the project grew exponentially, both in terms of scope, expense, footprint. But again, we're in 2014 trying to throw a dart to 2019 and land on a date, an arbitrary date at that, that we thought, you know, hey, we have to have some deadlines. We have to have some milestones in this. So this sounds reasonable. And the size and scope of the project notwithstanding, you have tariffs, you have construction volume, you had weather. Last year, we had something like 200 rain days or something crazy. But despite that, we're still here almost, we're almost, we're almost there. We're almost ready to hit that date that we set for ourselves in 2014. And in order to do that, in order to make sure we do that, we're asking for a little bit of extra time. And Chris wants to bring you current on where the project is and where it came from.
Sure. He just likes me to speak numbers and nothing else. So that's probably my strength. Really, as Justin mentioned, the financial deal points of the developer agreement were executed really when Councilman Schaffner and Councilman Lamont were probably the only ones present at the time. And the key point of this slide is just to remember that as of March 14th, 2014, we've never come back and asked for a single penny to be added to the developer agreement. Those financial deal points have been in place and have stayed in place. The only requirements that were really asked of us at the time were a $2.5 million appraised value, not an investment, an appraised value. What we've invested now collectively between Breadwinners and HG is over $12 million. Didn't come back and ask for a single penny to be added to our developer agreement, kept to what we signed in March of 14th. We did, however, come back several times, two times, to ask for an extension. We asked for time, but we didn't ask for money. Never part-time jobs or full-time jobs that were a requirement. Now between HG and Breadwinners, two of the top five employers in Trophy Club will be these two restaurants with 135 to 175 part-time jobs, 45 to 55 full-time jobs. We didn't expect with a 3,500 square foot footprint and maybe 8,000 on the Breadwinner site, more than $4 to $5 million in revenue to be generated between both restaurants. We now expect 10 to 14, maybe 20 million. Coming out of these restaurants, we expect a lot more. The property tax values have gone from 2 million to 7 million. And the square footage, which is most important, that generates that revenue, has gone anywhere from 10,500 up to over 38,000 square feet. The developer agreement, the only two points, the only three points it had that it required us to have is a $2.5 million appraised value, two restaurants, we brought five, and lease terms of 10 years with each restaurant, or lease terms with both restaurants, or 15 years with a five-year option. So we have come back. We think collectively and unanimously, we've done a lot better for the town and we have asked for time, but not anything else other than that to be added to the developer agreement. So with that, I want to turn it over to the man of the hour, Elias Pope.
Okay. So I only wanted to speak on staffing and how we open restaurants. So I think we've all met each other and enjoyed each other's company over the last year while we talked. I got to speak at the Alliance out at the racetrack, which was exciting. And we're super awkward and it didn't work out with me because I'm not good at this talking in front of people thing. I'm more interested in building cool spaces that people leave and they don't realize why they feel so great, but they feel great. And that's what I think we've done here. So little do they know when they talk, pulled me out of here, my first management job was Salt Grass Steakhouse in Grapevine. So I ran the Grapevine Salt Grass Steakhouse for eight years. I was the GM there. I know the community extremely well, especially from a hiring base. So we've actually already hired our entire leadership and chef team for this venue. Incredibly exciting things. They're helping us open our own, our other venue called Hero, which is going to be another one of the restaurants that we do here. And so they're going to take that. We're going to, we've already started hiring in Denton at the university. And we're incredibly excited about the people that we're going to get to bring into the community. And the other piece of the puzzle that I want to touch on is to create such a dynamic build takes time. And I am probably the, the, rain is to blame. Let's blame rain, first of all, for last year, but then we can blame Elias for some of these things. Creating a space that's dynamic, that makes sense to be in what I hear is not the greatest location for a restaurant now. No, but it's exciting. And it took us a little bit of time. And for these guys to bear with me, you know, one thing I can say about them is that I've never worked with a group so passionate about a city and so passionate about my vision. And to be able to create, change, develop, and define the space with these guys behind me and Levi over there doing the groundwork has been exciting and something that I've never done, I've never done before and never seen anybody do. So we're going to deliver a really cool product, a product that's dynamic, that's different. And I think it's going to be a model for things to come for a lot of different cities. And I'm excited to be a part of it.
Thank you, Elias.
Absolutely.
All right. Y'all can be seated if you'd like to. If we ask a question, you can come up. Alicia?
So I think Chris was speaking to this. So this project started out at 4,500-ish square feet or something because the lot was such where the power lines going through, you weren't sure what you're, what you were actually going to be able to put on this space, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we.
And then you managed to put how many square feet on here?
So we started off, we were projecting that this, this is probably the first footprint. You see a 4,800 square foot and a 2,500 square foot. We already realized that wasn't parked appropriately. So the blend of that was going to be about 3,500 square feet where now sits over 25,000 square feet. So those power lines, it was.
Quite a jump, yeah.
It's not only a tertiary site by what developers and brokers would call it have a site. The power lines made it almost impossible to develop. Coming up with 25,000 square feet took a little bit of time, but obviously we maximized the space.
Right. Well, that was my main point there, that this has increased so much and just in size alone, much less all of the other things that came into play, like Elias was saying, to be a great space with a lot of different, just a lot of different things going on with the coffee shop, a restaurant, workspace, things for the kids, patios, bars. So that's probably a lot more things that you had to plan for than originally in the first agreement.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, the fortunate thing of having this seven-year relationship with the town of Trophy Club is that we've come back time and time again and said, we found something, but we think we can do better. And collectively and almost unanimously on every time we've come back, we've collectively agreed to go do the better thing. It took a little bit more time, but every time, we've done it for the betterment of the community and the betterment of the project.
And of course, that in turn, Jonathan's going to be greater tax revenues. Obviously, the bigger space you have, the more activities and venues for the residents to enjoy and people, and destination, like Justin had mentioned, people actually coming into a destination space is just going to be a lot better as well and more revenues in that sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. I'm next to speak. I just had a question for you. Both the TERS Board and EDC Board extended the agreement to May 31.
Yes.
They both unanimously agreed to do so. So the question I have is, can you make the May 31?
We have to. And Elias just told me earlier, he's going to run away from me forever if he doesn't hit the deadline. So yes.
So what are the things that you see that stand in the way of accomplishing that?
You know, there's, there's some minor things. It's getting a little bit of equipment plugged in, things like that. But then we're still working with our team, the construction team, and we meet with them often throughout the week. Their goal is to be done by the end of this month. I think we realistically, sitting down with them, think mid-March and maybe our original, you know, the March 22nd is feasible. I think we're very close to that. It would be, it would be a shame to be right around there and miss it by a couple weeks. I think May 31st is well beyond what we need. But we need it just in case. There are always unknowns in construction.
Yes, thank you. All right. Mr. Lamont?
First of all, Jonathan, if you recall, we went to a chamber, Mayor's Roundtable, and I used the word suburbs. That was not good. We're an urban area. I mean, I'm sorry, a rural area. And I said, we're not urban. And they said, we're rural. So just give you a little heads up. Prior to January 8th, I would have voted for this in a heartbeat. But we were attacked, Alicia and I yelled at other areas about this. Then Justin, you went on Facebook and you insinuated that Alicia and I said something, leaked information or staff did. And we did not, we didn't know about some of this information. I don't get into details. But, and then appointed officials went out there and started saying things and misinformation. And I just don't feel that this tends to be that you're trying to intimidate us into voting for this. And I just think that it sends a wrong message. I think we're all entitled to our opinions. And I'm not going to vote for this, just for that. And I hope you don't hold it against me, but I wish you the best, get it open. But I think a message has to be sent. You shouldn't be going on Facebook and going after council members or even staff.
All right. Councilmember Jensen?
When's the current contract expire, Jonathan?
March.
March 22nd.
Okay. Mr. Dodd, will you please explain to council what happens if this contract expires without an extension?
Then it's the termination of the contract.
Yes, sir. And then who's liable for future payments on that property?
I'd have to review that for sure.
Review it then, because Councilman Lamont needs to know what he's voting against. And I don't think we should have a vote until we're told the answer.
Well, this is the first I've heard of that particular question. I'll go back in the office and pull it up right now if you'd like me to.
We may need to postpone till later then.
I do know that our obligations to pay on it terminate that. As far as ownership is first I've been asked.
So we're still, so the town is liable to make the payments?
No, not if the contract terminates.
Okay, so then what happens to the property?
I have to look at that.
Because we have to assume, let's assume that Councilman Lamont's not the only one that's going to vote against it.
Oh, I'm not going to assume any of that.
Let's say it doesn't pass. What happens to it? Do we now have, do we now have a vacant building? Do we now have a vacant building just sitting there?
I don't know.
With nobody to operate it?
I don't know. I don't know if the contract will-
I think that's a very important question to answer.
All right, Alicia?
I just wanted to state that I'm not going to let silly Facebook have a bearing on my decisions here or my vote here, no matter what. Justin and I had a discussion about that very candidly and open, because I'm pretty candid and open. And my job here is to do what's best for this town and its citizens, no matter what anyone else says or tells me what I should and should not do. So I do appreciate the fact that OTD is here tonight explaining everything. I did appreciate the fact that they called a meeting last month to explain some other aspects peripherally on this project. I do appreciate the communication that is now taking place between everybody. I do appreciate the fact that the citizens tonight and viewers are able to come watch the video and and find out information that they may have not been privy to before. I'm not privy to information before I hear it from you guys or here. We all know that. So I do appreciate you being here. And Facebook does not determine my votes, no matter how ugly it gets. Oh, well. So that's all.
If I might, Councilmember Jensen, 3.11 says the developer has purchased the property. The developer is OTD. As far as I can see, the town is not on it. Our obligation is paying an amount equal to the note. And if the contract expires, that obligation terminates.
So basically, we're telling a developer, you're not getting any more money. And as the presentation showed, we still owe them-
Well, no, we don't owe them under the contract, if it terminates.
If it terminates, right. So we stop payments.
Right.
Because their payments are stopped because their obligation to contain, to obtain two certificates of occupancy by a certain date, we're not-
Thanks, sir. Do you mind if I continue on that topic real quick, Nick?
Sure, go ahead.
Just want the residents to understand what the attorney is telling us. What he's saying is, if we vote against this contract, we are telling any developer to stay away. No developer will ever come here again, pay special attention to the words that are spoken by your council members. We should be a business-friendly environment, and for somebody to sit on this dais and give a threat like that, the citizens should not accept it. I will definitely be voting for this extension.
Thanks, sir. All right, thank you.
Can I?
So I was next in the queue, so give me just a minute.
Sorry.
The reason I asked the questions about making the extension was to bring out the fine points of the agreement. I think you did a very adequate job pointing out that what the vision was two years ago is not what the reality is today. And I'm happy to see that we're going to have a venue that comes to town that can be a destination restaurant. Our piece of property in this particular area of Trophy Wood Business Center area isn't the easiest to get to. And for years, have been working to try to make that easier. And so we currently have approved by TechStop and being funded to create Texas U-Turns so that someone headed east on 114 wouldn't have to go through the lights to go back around and come to Breadwinners and HG. Don't know how many years that'll be before it's finished, but nevertheless, it's on the plan to get it done. And government moves pretty slow in that particular aspect to get those things done. So that's been part of what we're hoping happens. And what I've been working on is I have participated in the Regional Transportation Council, both on their executive board and on the council itself. I think you've done a good job trying to get there on time. I was the one that brought up and said, I don't want to be at the last minute, one week away from you getting a CO, and you come to me and say, I'm not going to make the CO date. Can I get an extension? So EDC and TERS both unanimously supported an extension. I think they set a somewhat aggressive one to push and to make it happen. So I support what's trying to happen. Years ago, we made an agreement that said we wanted to develop things in Trophy Club, and our citizens said what we want, number one, is restaurants. That's what our citizens wanted. And they wanted more park space and things that they could participate in. We're trying to accomplish that task. We're close to getting across the line with at least this phase, and then we have another one to go. So I look forward to it, and we'll be supporting it. Councilmember Schaffner, you have the floor.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the economic development agreement as amended.
Second? All right, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem Schaffner, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. We now are debating the particular topic of the motion and the contract. So I have some people who asked to speak. I'm going to skip down to David Dodd, who's our attorney, to see if he wants to add something right now.
And an additional answer to the earlier, we do not own it. If it, if the contract expires, if the CO obligations are not met, we do have a right to purchase it if we want or require the sale of it.
All right. So Greg, you were in the queue next.
Yeah, just to follow up on something. We are business friendly. We gave them a two-year extension. So that, to me, is business friendly. And that works the other way, too. They have to respect us.
All right. Alicia?
I just wanted to note, too, for those who may not know our town, I think staff has been very supportive of the developers. I think that they've worked well with you guys and tried to make things happen. And I think, I believe Town Manager Class is the one who actually found that, hey, we better get on this, whether we're going to extend or not, because we're going to run up against this date. If we don't, if we didn't get this, get to it this meeting, it was going to be too late. So thank you, Mr. Class, for finding that and getting us here to this point we are tonight.
All right. No one seems to have the floor to speak or has asked to speak. So the motion has been made and seconded. That is before us to approve the extension to the agreement to May 31, 2019. Is that correct date in the agreement?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does carry Mr. Lamont voted against. So thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it very much. All right. Item number 16, Case O-AMD-1801 Attached Forward-Facing Garages Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding a Request to Amend Residential Garage Regulations in Section 1402-151I, 1402-152I, 1402-153I, 1402-154I, 1402-155H, 1402-156H, 1402-159H of the Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to allow attached forward-facing garages that are in addition to two-car garages. And so I think we're starting with Town Manager Payne, who's going to talk to us.
All right, Town Manager.
Town Manager, hey.
I got promoted.
I think that requires a second.
Did I say Town Manager?
Did you get a promotion?
Town Planner, sorry about that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to consider a request to amend residential garage regulations to allow attached forward-facing garages that are in addition to the two-car minimum. The strategic link for this item is nature and beautification, to maintain town assets, services, and codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. Attached garages are currently not allowed to face a street, but Town Council has directed staff to prepare ordinance amendments to allow attached third and fourth car garages to face the street, just as detached garages can. In the Code of Ordinances, detached garages can face the frontage street if set back 45 feet from the front property line, and can face the side street if set back 35 feet from the side property line. The proposed amendments replicate the existing detached garage restrictions so that a homeowner has the choice to build an attached garage and protect the aesthetic value and functionality of their home. If approved, all the garages in straight zone districts will still not be allowed to face the golf course, and first and second car garages will still not be allowed to face the street. Furthermore, this proposal does not recommend any changes to the detached garage regulations. At the January 3rd P&amp;Z meeting, the commission ultimately forwarded no recommendation to council after a three-to-three vote. When I updated council on this item at the January 8th meeting, I was asked to prepare a map for the town that shows where, that shows where an attached forward-facing third car garage is already allowed versus where it's proposed. The map on the screen identifies lots that do allow this in green, lots that are subject to the proposal in yellow, and lots that don't allow attached forward-facing garages in red. I was also asked to prepare an exhibit that compares the allowed usable space on a lot for a detached garage, which is allowed by right, and an attached garage in accordance with the proposed amendment to the code. As you can see in green on the screen, an attached garage would be less intrusive to neighbors than a detached garage. In addition, I've provided pictures as examples of a detached third car garage, an attached third car garage, and an attached third and fourth car garage. The proposed ordinance language is in your packets. Staff recommends approval and is available for questions.
All right. Mr. Schaffner?
Yeah, I just had some clarifying questions. So if you go back to what's allowed now, and that-
This one?
Yeah. So just for clarification, in all of the zoning districts that are in yellow, I think that you had before that-
Yes.
You are already allowed to have a detached garage, whether it be on the golf course, whether it be against a sewer treatment plant, wherever.
Correct.
In those yellow, you're allowed to have a detached, and the detached is the six-foot, six-foot, six-foot. You can put that anywhere in that green, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so what we're proposing is more restrictive than what's already allowed right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then maybe for Tommy, do you, do you consider a, so let's say that I built a detached garage, and I put a breezeway connecting the two. Is that considered attached or detached?
It's considered attached if it's within 10 feet of the primary structure.
So, so I think you'll see these, like in the lakes, where they have the garage right by the house, and they have a breezeway. And so you're saying, or a connected structure. So you're saying that if it's within 10 feet and and that breezeway exists, that's considered attached?
That is correct. That's court and ordinance.
So theoretically, you can't do that in that yellow zoning area or the, in the yellow, you would not be able to put that breezeway. Is that correct, or?
Well, because the porticoche would make it attached or detached.
Technically, the roof cover would consider it attached. There's no, there's no definition of attached.
Right.
So the roof structure itself would call it attached.
So even if I wanted to do that, technically, I can't in in the yellow sections of Trophy Club?
Right, because if, because of the fact that the setbacks would be more restrictive.
Okay, okay. That's the two questions I had.
All right, so I had a couple of questions. There are a number of people here tonight that come from a particular area of town, Fresh Meadows, Seminole, who have what we would call R15-zoned lots. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so today, if somebody wanted to build a garage, what can they do and not do today without any changes to our code?
They can build a detached garage that may or may not face the street. They can build a garage attached to their house that faces the side of their property. They can't face, build a garage that faces the golf course at all. And they can't have an attached garage that faces the street.
Okay. And so the other part of that is, one of their residents brought up to me that they thought there were some original zoning aspects of their lots that did not allow some type of accessory structure. Do you know anything about that?
These lots were developed in the 70s before we were established as a town, so that that would predate any zoning ordinance that we would have had. I believe that those are covenants and restrictions that may have come with the lots. But those are not things that the town can enforce, as I haven't seen any documentation telling us to do so.
So if they had a covenant in their deed that either prohibited or allowed, whatever it did, even though we might be contrary to that, they can't go past that. Is that right or not right?
Your deeds and covenants are like HOA requirements. They can be more restrictive. They can't be less than our ordinance.
Okay. So what I was told, which I haven't seen a deed, was, again, what I think you said, Lisa, was they can't have some type of accessory structure like a garage that faces, opening faces the golf course. Right? Now, that's what our code says today also.
That's correct.
Right? So maybe it matches what they think they have in a deed. All right. And so I think that's all I had. Philip, did you have another question?
Yeah, and one more clarifying question on this subject. I did a little research on this, and what I found is that this, what you're showing here and what is allowed, was approved on September 21st, 1987, under ordinance number 87-23. And that specific ordinance dealt with R Section 3, which I think that this predates what we call R15 now. R Section 3 was that R15. And so, so this has been allowed, an allowed use or an allowed thing in Trophy Club since 87, 1987, September 21st. You don't doubt that, do you? Or?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we get that when it was approved.
Councilmember Lamont?
So tell me, they can build a detached two-car garage, and it can be listed under accessory structure. Is that correct?
If it's detached, it is an accessory.
So would that, that would require a permit unlike a shed, though, right?
Any structure over 120 square feet and higher than eight feet tall requires a permit. So yes, that would require a permit. So would a shed taller than eight feet or 120
Anybody else have a question before I go to citizens who have signed up for comments?
Let me ask one other thing. How, I know that some people have come before us, and they've stated that you're only allowed to build a one-story. So is that all you're allowed to build on an accessory structure in any of these zoning districts?
Well, the maximum height for an accessory structure would be 20 feet. And it's not to, to house anyone. Nobody can live there. It can't be a habitable structure. That's not allowed per code.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We're going to go to our citizens' comments and maybe come back. So I have six people who have signed up to talk. If you want to talk, I'll just remind you that you need to go back to the back table on my right. There's a little- There's a little blue sheet you can fill out with your name, address, and say you'd like to speak on item number 16, and turn it in to Holly Ferber's on my left up here, and we'll get you in the list to talk. I would just encourage you, if you hear someone talk ahead of you, and they've adequately discussed what you wanted to discuss or state that, you might just say, "I agree with that person." Move on, but you're welcome to say the entire amount if you'd like to. Ramona Deaton, I believe, is the person next. Ramona? Come on up to the microphone.
Oh, I have a question for her, though.
That's fine. You can ask it when you get up here. So state your name and your address, and then you can have the floor for four minutes.
Ramona Deaton. I live at 218 Fresh Meadow and have been there for 36 years, and I was wanting to express my view, but now I have a question about the R-15 zoning. Are you saying, sir, that in 87, the R-15 was changed, and it's no longer in existence? That's what I understood.
No.
And that it now...
No, in 87, it was considered Section 3. That's just what they called it. And later on, that was amended to be R-15, but it's the same thing, just different names.
Section 3 is the name of the subdivision on the flat.
Yeah.
Okay, and what specifically is that allowing? I'm confused. I'm sorry.
What is the R-15 allowing, or what is what we're proposing?
Okay.
What the old allowance was.
Yeah, what was the old allowance? And did 87 change it?
No.
Eighty-seven codified it.
Yeah.
So what you had...
Okay.
So the town came into existence '85, and they started doing all the different ordinances, and this was one of the things that they added in 87, that a accessory structure is allowed in Section 3, which is R-15. And actually, that ordinance has all of those different R-11, R-12, all of those different zoning.
Okay, and that...
Now, prior to that, we have, we don't know if it was allowed or not allowed. I think some people have written us...
Oh, okay.
Some people have written us and saying that when they built the house, they were told they couldn't, but we don't know that.
Yeah, that's what we were told when we bought the property. But now, am I to understand that the setbacks on this 87 rezoning that changed R-15 or zoned it, that you can go, the setbacks are much further?
Correct. The 87 document or ordinance is almost exactly with what we have today.
Which is the six-foot?
Right.
So if you look at the diagram on the right, that says a building cannot be closer than six feet from your property line.
Okay, so then my question is, now, this is just clarifying things for me. Does that mean that, okay, I live at 218 Fresh Meadow on the golf course, and could I actually build a garage, a three-car garage, going sideways, all the way 25 feet from the back set line?
Six feet.
Six feet today, but if we change it, it'd be 25 feet.
If it's detached, then you can go up to six feet from the property line. If it's attached to your house, you can just go to the building lines that are on your plat and in the zoning ordinance. So it would still only be allowed to be 12 and a half feet from the side or 25 feet.
So I could have it back here like this?
If it's, if it were attached, and detached, if it's detached, you can go all the way to six feet from your property line.
Wow, that's even worse than what I came here for today. That is worse than I thought. Okay. Because I was going to say, one of the reasons I think that Seminole and Fresh Meadow have just such an appeal, and the values naturally are higher than for an old house, you know, like I have a 1982 house, and I had a 525 appraisal recently. And, but one of the reasons is because when I look out my backyard, you know, from my patio, I can look to the right, and I've got a beautiful golf course view. No obstructions, no buildings there, like a garage that's set six foot back. You know, I wouldn't even be able to see beyond it. And then same thing on this side, and it's got a beautiful view going up. So I'm saying that if we're going to be allowed to do garages like this, I believe, as a Realtor also for 40 years, it definitely affects property values on those two streets. And I guess, so naturally, I'm opposed to it, but I guess it's too late if you're saying it's already... I'd like to see that in black and white, actually.
So I guess I would just comment, you can go to your deed or the plat that was created when your property was platted, and there may be some information there that would clarify some restrictions that we are not aware of.
Yeah.
But what happened back in 87 is we tried to create our ordinances to match what zoning was in town. Does that make sense? Because you needed an ordinance in order to enforce things. So thank you very much, and if you have another question, you can come back up later when I go down the list. Eric, you want to talk before the other people?
I've got a question for the lady.
Yes.
Ma'am?
Ma'am. Ramona? He has a question for you if you want to come back up, please.
I have a question for you. So we got a lot of letters, and they were form letters. Basically, somebody wrote out a form, went up and down your street, signed it. We get it. Did you send us that letter?
Yes.
You did, okay.
I did.
So I want to hear everything. We've got to hear from everybody that's here, and I hope everybody that's on that street and sent that letter comes up and speaks, because it's really important to decide what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, when we get that many responses that say, "Don't do it,"
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to do it. So my question to you is, did you really know what you were signing is one question. The second question is, do you still feel the same way after seeing the presentation? Would you have still signed that letter?
Absolutely, because I was totally dumbfounded, I'm dumbfounded right now, that it's different than what I assumed that I purchased, you know? The knowledge that I had in '83 when I bought my home was that I would never have to worry...
Understand that it changed in '87.
Well, I realize that now, but I didn't know that.
So let's talk about what the ordinance is today. What you're allowed to do today is six feet from your property line.
That's terrible. I'm opposed to that, even though it's...
So if we don't change the ordinance, anybody could build six feet from the property line.
Yeah, too bad. Yeah. I mean, that's sad.
So the letter says, "Don't change the ordinance."
Oh, well, yeah.
It says six feet. Are you okay with that? Or do you want us to change it to 12 and a half?
No.
12 and a half?
Yes, that's what's right there. Right now, it's six feet.
12 and a half is the side.
Now, it's 12 and a half has to go closer to your house. Right now, it could be six feet from property line, and then your next-door neighbor could do six feet from their property line, so you have a 12-foot gap in between.
I would have to think about that, because right now, I'm just shocked.
Thank you so much. One of the things we had talked about, Mayor, we are in a public hearing, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So one of the things we discussed at the retreat was potentially having more than one public hearing on this issue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that might be what comes of it. We may not do a thing tonight.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I have another question for you if you want to... Ramona, if you want to stay there just a moment, sorry.
You're on the hot seat, Ramona.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Ramona. So if you look at the two pictures that are up there, the one on the right is what is there now, one on the left is a bigger setback. From my standpoint, this is just me personally, it looks like to me the one on the left is more restrictive, because if there was 12 and a half feet from each neighbor, that gave me 25 feet of space to look through, as opposed to 12 feet. Does that make sense? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, it makes sense, but I guess I'd still have to see where that garage is going to be put, if it's, you know, whether it's closer to the property or far in the back.
Well, they both would have to be 45 feet from the curb or the property line.
Yeah, I know.
So that means they're setback, and probably in most cases, that's recessed from the front of your property. But we'd have to look at every house to see if that was the case. Now, the difference also is attached versus detached.
Yeah.
Right? So Philip, I mean, Tommy, currently, they can do attached or detached?
Just detached.
Just detached, right?
Just detached to where the setbacks are as the right side indicates, which is much less restrictive.
And we're not proposing to change that if it's detached?
That is correct. If this ordinance passes for the change, they'll still be able to do the detached as shown on the right. It will just allow the attached to be forward-facing, but at the same time, meeting the new setbacks. It's much more restrictive than what they've currently got now, which is on the right side, which has been there since 1987.
If they attach it. And attach is a little bit subjective in the sense of if it's within X feet of the main structure, and you have some type of connectivity, it's attached.
That is correct.
Doesn't mean it shares a common wall.
Does not.
Does everybody understand that? It could be called attached, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but not share a common wall.
That's correct. I just wanted to add that with the 12 and a half foot setback...
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes. I just wanted to add that within that green area, you know, on the right side of that home, somebody could already put an attached garage that's just facing the side. This is really more of a question if it can face the street or not. So that area in that particular home can already be blocked, and they only have to get a permit for the work. It's just a matter of the garage faces the street.
All right, Mr. Lamont, you have the floor.
Well, following up on what Eric said, perhaps we should look at the whole picture, attached, detached, the structures, and even maybe looking for variances instead, which would notify the surrounding neighbors. Because I think to make the decision tonight probably wouldn't be, I think, in the best interest.
All right. So thank you very much, Ramona.
Thank you.
So unless somebody else wants to ask you a question, we'll go down the list. The second person is Sally Tataritz. I probably said that wrong, Sally, but sorry.
It's Tatarowicz, but I'm used to that.
Okay, I didn't accent correctly the...
I came with a prepared statement. I'm going to change it somewhat because of what I've just been listening to this evening. First of all, my name is Sally Tatarowicz, and I live at 217 Fresh Meadow Drive, right across the street from Ramona, actually. And I've lived here for 31 years in Trophy Club, and 13 of those years, I taught at backup elementary, so I feel like I'm a really integrated part into the community. I'm volunteering to read the comments that I have on behalf of my neighbors, Pat and Ken Kiefer, who live across the street from me, and they couldn't be here this evening. I'm going to skip over part of what they wrote based on the conversation that we've just had here this evening. I don't think it would work right now. But there was another point that they included in their letter, which is sort of relevant to that, but not exactly the same. "We ask the town to consider vastly more proactive and individual notification when a zoning change will impact property owners." The request is made because we're alarmed and disturbed when the zoning for our property could be changed without having us, as the owners, be notified that the zoning was under consideration. In a sense, we purchased our property and our home. We signed up to obey the land use and terms and conditions. Now, I understand they're different. This is my statement, not theirs. I understand that those are different than what our understanding has been up until now. Because we obey the land use terms and conditions, we expect the town to honor its end of the governance of these terms. Rewriting rules without enough notice in advance of property owners will be impacted. What needs to be addressed? And so in closing, I ask you to honor our request, give us good notification ahead of time so that we can formulate our thoughts and make a good judgment. Thank you for the consideration for this input, and again, we appreciate your service to the town. This is originally signed by Pat Kiefer, resident for a third of a century, and I, Sally Tatarowicz, agree with what's in this letter because I also think the same way. So thank you for hearing us.
Sally, I have a question for you before you leave, if you don't mind. One of the things that I'm going to suggest, not only to you but the other people, is it became hard to contact you to give you more facts. So in the future, if you do sign a form letter, giving us phone numbers and our email addresses would surely help us communicate better to you. And that's just to help this whole process. I think you heard Councilmember Jensen bring up the fact that we've had some discussion about when we're affecting people's lives and property. We might obey the law, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And so you're bringing up that exact point that says, how do we notify you? How do we get you to come talk to us?
Yes.
And have a dialogue so that we make the best decision? And so I think that's what you want also.
It is.
It is what we want. Unfortunately, people don't always come talk to us about what we're getting ready to change, and then we change something, and then people get upset because we changed it. So I really appreciate your activism in the neighborhoods, and that you're giving us something to think about and talk about, and so we'll go on and get through the rest of our people, and then we'll see where we go.
We'd be glad to give you contact information after this. I think that because we got very short notice that that was up under zoning, we didn't have as much time as maybe we would have enjoyed to prepare either, but totally understand the contact, and we'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Salas or Salas, I'm not sure if I say that right. Which one?
Salas.
Salas, okay.
Hello, I'm Kathy Salas, 103 Seminole Drive. And I've been hearing a lot of concerns, and I love where I live. I've only been there less than a year and a half. I think the area we live is some of the most beautiful property in Trophy Club. Having said that, Trophy Club now is a golf cart community, and being a golf cart community, if one chooses to have a golf cart, you're now faced with, most of us have two-car garages, a car has to sit outside, you have to put the cart in the garage. No big deal, I suppose, other than a car now is sitting on the driveway all the time. Not good for the car, in my opinion, and I think it's more unsightly than having things tucked away in a garage. Secondly, when we bought, we made sure of certain things that we wanted to do because we knew we needed to make some changes to the house if we were going to buy it. So one of the things that we could consider is a detached garage. For the same reasons, if I put a detached garage and my neighbor decides to put a detached garage, we're only going to be 12 feet apart from each other, and it can be the same block of the view as it is if I have an attached. From a property value, from an aesthetic value, I believe that it's much better to be attached. It takes, you're guaranteed, as you said, Mr. Sanders, 25 feet of space of pass-through view which cannot be built on. I would like that. The idea of 25 versus 12 is much more appealing to me. Having said that, I understand already today, we could only get down to 12 because we could do it detached. I personally don't want to be forced into that decision to have to put a detached and go up to the six-foot line. I really don't. And in doing my looking, I went around the neighborhood, and I wanted to look at what we already have. We do actually have, I think a gentleman mentioned, a front-facing garage. It just is separated by a portico, so that does already exist on Seminole. We have a number of places, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, between Fresh Meadow and Seminole, where cedar fences block views, either partially or fully. So again, in my opinion, I don't intend to put a fence, I just would like to extend out. It's much more sightly to have a structure that's tastefully done part of the house than having all this cedar fence that goes bad all the time. There are also two places where sheds already partially block view between Seminole and Fresh Meadows. If you go over to Inverness, which is also a beautiful part, I think it's not, wasn't named as part of the same estate property at the time, but there is already a detached single-story garage that I would encourage people to go look at. I don't find it aesthetically pleasing. Sure, they were kind of pushed into that because they couldn't attach. So anyway, I think that's all I wanted to say. You know, it's just I think our needs are changing as a community as time passes, and we do have golf carts. I prefer to have things tucked away. Thank you.
So to help Mr. Jensen, did you send one of the letters?
No.
Okay, thank you. Please keep in track of who sent one and how they talk. Okay, maybe not. Okay. The next person is Tanya... person is Tanya Beard? If I said that right. Tanya?
Yes. Hello.
State your name and address, please.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to stand before you and provide my input on the zoning change that you're proposing. My name is Tanya Beard. I am a 20-year resident of Trophy Club, as well as a real estate agent, who loves to bring my clients to this wonderful town. We, when we were looking for a home 20 years ago, it was the unique features of the R-15 zoning that offered, which appealed to us, and ultimately the reason that we chose a home and have enjoyed that for over 20 years. I'm asking you this evening to protect and preserve our unobstructed views of the beautiful green space surrounding our homes and preserve the unique character of our neighborhood. So, whatever is, when you think about passing restrictions, I would just ask that you think about preserving those views and our unique qualities. And again, I just want to thank you for allowing us to come before you.
So, what's your street address?
215 Fresh Meadow Drive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Alicia? Did you have a question for her?
I did. And did you understand that what we're proposing is more restrictive than what is currently?
I did not understand that until I came. So, what I'm asking is just to be considerate of our views and protecting what we have. So, if it's more restrictive than it currently is, then I think that's a good...
A better thing.
A better thing.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
Yes, I did not understand.
Because I know what's confusing. I know a lot of people are confusing.
Until I came and, of course, just, you know, this discussion, I did not understand that, but now I do. But I still, in the future, would ask that you, you know, vote to preserve those qualities that we have in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Trophy Club's first mayor, Jim Carter.
We all got a stand, I think.
I know.
Yes, and I was here in '87.
It's your signature on it.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Carter. I reside at 10005 Roadrunner Road, Bartonville, Texas, just over the lake. And first off, I want to thank you for your service to the town. Thank you very much for all you do, staff. Thank you for what you do, all of you. And I know what it takes, the time and commitment that you put forth. So, thank you very much. For 22 years, I did reside at 204 Fresh Meadow. We bought the house in 1981. My former wife still resides at that house, and she's here tonight, Jean. And she sent one of the letters. Or she sent a letter. I'm not sure that it was a form letter. Anyway, just want to, I think a couple of things that we want to talk about is we bought the house in '81 because of the amenities in the area, the ambulances and all. And at that time, it was probably the premier place to live in Trophy Club. The western part was not built out as it was. So, if you think about the money that we paid in 1981 for those homes and convert that to $2019, it was quite a bit of money that we invested in those houses. We loved the amenities, the things that the first gentleman that spoke of early on talked about. And I'm a little bit confused, which is not unusual. You said that the posting basically on your agenda talks about front-end garages. And that's basically what most of us are concerned about. We do not want front-end garages. Hey, we'll take the extra space on the build-back lines. But that was basically what we're here for, what I was here for, was front-end garages. I opposed them the whole time. And you're saying that, Phil, that this ordinance was passed and allowed front-end garages in 1987, I believe you said. If that's the case, what are you doing? What's this ordinance supposed to do if it's already in place?
What was allowed in '87 is detached. Attached is not allowed right now.
Okay. And that's what you're trying to change?
Correct.
Okay. Well, let me just say, we don't want any changes, and I don't live in that area. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Bill Eden. Mr. Eden, please state your name and address when you get to the microphone.
Bill Eden, 1 Fresh Meadow Court, Trophy Club America. If you haven't been there, it's one of the most beautiful places in the United States.
We agree.
Some people talk about it in North Texas. I think it's, I've been all over the world, and it's a special place.
It's also a very safe place.
It is also a very safe place.
Thank you. Have to make that plug.
I concur with the former mayor. I appreciate, I've served on a lot of boards and commissions, and we certainly appreciate your time doing this. I was out walking my dog today in that little area. Can you put, who's doing, are you doing this?
I can.
Can you put that?
The O'Roamout.
The red, where it said, there you go. Is red what we're talking about here?
No, sir. Where y'all live, if you're on Fresh Meadow or Seminole, is right here. And so, yellow is one of the places that is up to be discussed for the proposal. Right here. Do you see where I'm?
Oh, okay. Right. Just a little island here.
Right.
All right. Well, the question is, why would you do anything? I mean, it's crazy. Leave it. Stop. It's not necessary. You're saying this deals better? I don't know. It's been pretty nice for quite a while. I would table it indefinitely. I don't think it's necessary. I ask all of you to go around and walk that area. Look around. It doesn't need garages. And I appreciate the golf cart. That I do.
But today, you wouldn't want me to build a detached garage facing forward, and that's what I'd have to be forced to decide.
No, we don't want that.
But I can. I can have it allowed.
But my point is, you say it's either this or that, right? That's what you're telling me. I'm telling you...
Today.
Yeah. Table it. Let's talk about it. Push it back. It's not just this or that. We have a planning and zoning commission. Is that correct?
We do.
Okay. I mean, they have a shot at it before it gets to you guys. So, what was that?
They did.
They already did it?
Yes, sir.
And what did they say?
Three to three. They were split.
So, it's split. So, obviously, there's some angst about it. Well, believe me, it's a gorgeous area. It's pristine. It's a paradise. Please, don't mess with it. I'm begging you.
I only visit your backyards.
Okay. Any questions, sir?
Is he one of the barbecue guys? No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Did anybody else want to speak that didn't sign up?
Yes, sir. We have Tiffany Nimpias who signed up to speak now.
Oh, okay. Tiffany, if you come forward, state your name and address, please.
All right. Tiffany Nimpias, 214 Fresh Meadow. And I know earlier, there was the question posed about what the covenants say in the deeds. I was able to pull one up real quick. So, I thought I'd read it for you real quick.
Thank you.
Now, it's a 92-page document. I did not read all 92 pages. I found something that I feel is pertinent, so I'm going to give you the abridged version. "No structure shall be located on any lot between the building setback lines shown on the subdivision plats and the street. With respect to all lots except golf course lots, no building shall be located nearer than five feet to any interior lot line." So, already, it's smaller than what currently exists up there. "With respect to golf course lots, no building, patio deck, terrace, or other similar open porch or artificially surfaced area shall be located nearer than 25 feet from the rear lot line, nor nearer than 15 feet from any side or other interior lot line, except that a garage or other permitted accessory building located 65 feet or more from the front lot line may be located within 10 feet of an interior lot line." So, again, it's already different than what's up here. Let's see. "No garage or other permitted accessory building on the golf course lots shall open toward or have its main access from the direction of any lot line adjoining the golf course." That's all it says.
Okay.
I mean, there's more, obviously, but I'll spare you.
Was that your lot?
That is my lot. It was the quickest one to pull. Also, I do actually have a question. So, my backyard has a very large open space on, if you're facing at the right backyard, back corner. How would it, I know a lot of people are wanting to preserve the view, but I could put up like a 25 by 25 pergola and outdoor kitchen, correct?
That's correct.
That would alter the view. I think the same goes for a garage. I feel like we're splitting hairs here. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak? All right. So, council, the...
We're in a public hearing.
We are in a public hearing, and I am hesitant to close the public hearing so that if we decided to have another public hearing, we wouldn't have to advertise it again. So, I'm not going to close the public hearing, but I am going to move us to item B, which allows us to take action. Does that make sense to everybody? All right. So, item B, consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance to amend residential garage regulations in sections so-and-so, all of those, of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to allow for attached forward-facing garages that are in addition to the two-car garage minimum. All right. So, the action item is properly before us. Counsel, anybody wish to discuss? Eric, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to table to the next council meeting held on March 26.
Second.
And can I speak on that? My goal, citizens, is not to act on the 26th. I think we need to give more time. There's no reason to rush at anything. I'm heavily leaning towards not doing anything, but I think y'all need to digest what's all been discussed. I assume we're going to get some more letters in the coming weeks, and that it would, hopefully we can have some type of discussion. There needs to be, we've had town halls before on issues. I think this warrants the same thing, mayor. So, thanks, sir.
All right. So, I have a motion and a second to table the item to the March, I mean, to the February 26th date, right?
But we also have a meeting on March 26th. Oh, did I say March? I apologize. February. Thanks, sir.
Okay. I wrote March, so...
Sorry. My bad.
Okay. All right. So, any discussion about the table? All right. Hearing none, we will vote on that action. All in favor of tabling this item to February the 26th, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It was unanimous. Citizens, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your input. I'll also tell you that staff is here available if you have a question about how it affects you, if you're not clear about it, or a neighbor's not, come up and visit with the staff. They're more than happy to try to help you. Tiffany, thank you for pulling up your deed. And so, I just encourage you to read your deed. I don't guarantee that all the deeds say the same thing as hers does. So, we may have a lot of conflicting information here. But it was really good to hear from you and see where the pros and cons are so that we could address that. One of the things that we have talked to staff about is how can we move forward with this in other parts of town without affecting you? And one of those areas is to say, we exempt R-15 totally from our change. That's a simple change, but it doesn't necessarily make it better for you now that you've learned what can be done, right? So, you learn some things that can be done today unless you have a deed restriction that you can find that would keep it from happening. So, we're trying to do the best we can here. So, thank you very much for coming. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. If you're going to stay, good.
Me too.
So, as you leave and you get outside in the foyer, just don't talk too loud because the door stays open. So, I wasn't talking just to you. Why'd you turn around? All right. Item number 17. Consider to take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town of Trophy Club ordering and calling a general election to be held on May 4, 2019 for the purpose of electing one council member to place five and one council member to place number six on the Trophy Club Town Council, each for a term of three years respectively, providing for the canvassing returns, providing for a runoff election as necessary, adopting provisions relative to publication, and other matters necessary to conduct the election, and providing an effective date. That's ordinance 2019-04. Holly, did you have anything you want to say?
No, sir. So, this is calling for the general election to be held on May 4 for place five and place six. Statutory last day to call this election would be February 15, which is, happens to also be the same day, last day to accept applications, which is 5:00 PM on February 15.
All right. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Lamott. Any discussion? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right. Item number 18. Discussion and provide direction regarding town legislative priorities for State Representative Tan Parker to sponsor. Counsel, I believe that all of you received a copy of an email that came from the MUD manager relative to a bill that is being talked about in the state legislature today or during this period with a proposed agreement of Westlake and the MUD to agree to what I'm going to call a de-annexation of a portion of property and financial changes. So, I wanted to bring this up. I don't know that I can talk to all of it, but it seems to me that in the past, it was a three-party agreement that had to be executed. Based on water code, my understanding is that you couldn't de-annex without some of what they're talking about, and that is the financial aspect, but you also couldn't do it without all parties involved. And at this point, they have not included the town of Trophy Club. I'm not sure we need to or have to, but I wanted to bring it up so that you could give direction to the town manager to see, do we want to get involved at this point, or do we want to wait and see what happens and then deal with it at that point? I don't recommend waiting too long because the way things work in the legislature, it could be tagged to a bill and fly through without us ever even knowing that it was going to be there. So, I encouraged some involvement earlier. So, this is for discussion and provide direction. Anybody else want to comment? I don't see anybody in the queue. Oh, Shoffner?
The only thing, and I've brought this up for years, is that I feel that with hotel occupancy, there should be a provision to allow the purchase of emergency equipment. I understand, I think you sent us something maybe a week or so ago about you could do overtime and things like that. And I get that. I've always understood staff time, especially for events and things of that nature. But I've always thought that emergency equipment should be something that is carved into hotel occupancy as an allowable use of those funds because the old saying is, you know, you use hotel occupancy to put heads in beds. And I think that you should also be able to protect those heads in beds, you know? So, I've always thought that that would be something that should be a no-brainer that you could use hotel occupancy for emergency equipment like fire trucks, ambulances, police vehicles, things of that nature. You can't use that money today. You can't take money out of hotel occupancy and use it. And this kind of came about back in 2014, Greg? And this kind of came about back in 2014, Greg? 2015? Whenever the chief, what's his name?
Niffen.
No, Thomas. Danny Thomas. Wanted an ambulance. And, you know, we were looking at ways to pay for that, and I thought, well, we can use hotel occupancy, you know? We've got this huge balance, and I can't use it. And so that's, I've always, I've always thought that that would be a good thing for the, you know, to give to somebody like Representative Parker or Caplione, that perhaps that would be, you know, of interest to them. So that's one thing that I would like. As far as the MUD, and I will say this, do we know their position, the MUD's position on this?
Yes, it's in writing in that email that said they've agreed upon, both sides have agreed upon that wording, is I think what it said.
Okay.
So, but, so Tom had some information about the first part of that, which was the MUD item, and, okay.
Based on a suggestion from the mayor, we reached out to several of the municipalities nearby, just to see if they had an interest.
Oh, in your item?
Oh.
It was in the.
Okay, yeah.
I was on. I said it right. No, go ahead, go ahead.
We reached out to a number of the municipalities. We didn't get any responses from those that we reached out to who were interested in looking into the hotel occupancy issue. It appears right now, most everybody's more interested in the whole revenue cap issue, and that's what they're focusing on. But we did, we did reach out and canvass.
So the thing that we haven't done, we didn't really talk to Parker's or Caplione's aid, did we?
No, did not.
Okay.
And the only reason that, you know, I think it's obviously attractive to a town like ours, because there's very little that, it's so narrowly focused what you can use hotel occupancy on, and it's not as if we have a lot of those items in town. And so that's why I thought it would be attractive to our situation, just because we do have those needs that arise from time to time. We do have that balance that's available, so.
All right. Anybody else have comments about this? Do you, do you want to try to get a representative or senator interested in trying to address the hot tax issue at all?
Sure, can hurt.
All right. Mixed, I guess, is the thing I'm getting there. All right.
That's what I've always got.
Mixed. All right. Anybody else have an item you'd like to bring up?
Of course, I will say this, you restrict revenue, and I bet that's going to change.
People would like to change it, probably.
Yeah. You're going to have to find creative ways to.
All right. Item 19, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the February 26, 2019 council agenda, and items from the Town Council future agenda list. The item that was supposed to come forward to us today is item number seven, not item number nine. They were renumbered last time we made some deletions, at least based on what I saw. Item number seven, future agenda items, less discussion and possible action regarding restrictions, short-term rentals. Has an update on that. There's some litigation going and involved in that, and Westlake actually passed something.
Westlake passed something? The litigation we were watching is in the Court of Appeals in Austin, the City of Austin case. The only thing that's happened there, they changed the panel. They switched it from three judges on the Court of Appeals to another three judges, and Austin changed attorneys.
Yeah, Westlake passed a restriction against it, but their attorney advised them that it may not stand.
Yeah. I mean.
All right. And so I'm going to call your attention to pages 484, 485, which is our next agenda. Does anybody have anything on this that they'd like to see moved up to this agenda, or some additional information you're going to want for these items?
Obviously, the forward-facing garages.
So it was suggested, I think this probably falls within the purview of this discussion, it was suggested by Councilmember Jensen to maybe have a less formal environment as opposed to a public hearing, town hall meeting of those people interested. Now, whether or not we could get them all to show up, I don't know, but that is something maybe we should look at, Tom. It might be a way to have a little more dialogue now that they know more. It was interesting that there was one lady that stood up and said, I would like something, place to put my golf cart. So not everybody maybe had that. All right. And then pages 46 and through 488 is our future agenda list. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that?
Annex building is getting long.
Well, there have been discussions on the annex building.
I have a meeting with the MUD general manager next week as well.
Right. Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else on that? All right. We're going to continue on to our executive session. At pursuit to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene an executive session to discuss the following consultation with attorney, and there are three items that deal there with a litigation case, sign ordinance issues, and conflict of interest disclosures. And item B, economic development considerations with property north of State Highway 114 east to Trophy Club Drive and west of the town limits, and north of State Highway 114 west of Trophy Club Drive. And item C, Section 551074, personnel matters discussed to break the appointment, employment evaluation, resignation, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. And we have three items to discuss that deal with our council liaisons to places. It is 8:57. We will reconvene into regular session at 9:46 PM, and we will consider items after our, that we discussed in executive session. I'm going to call up items 21 and 22 together. 21 is Resolution 201902, which is reaffirming existing appointments to EDC and appointing someone as the council liaison. Item 22 is appointing a council liaison to the council subcommittee for judiciary oversight of the budget. I'll recognize Councilmember Lamont for a motion.
Motion to repeal Resolution Number 2018-19 and approve Resolution Number 2019-02, appointing Councilmember Eric Jensen to serve as the council liaison to the Economic Development Corporation 4B, reaffirming existing appointments in places one through seven, and providing an effective date of February 12, 2019.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous.
Like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Shoffner to the vacant position on the Council Finance Subcommittee and reaffirm the existing appointments of Mayor Sanders and Councilmember Jensen.
Second. All right, move by Lamont, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Item 23, we're going to take no action on tonight. And item 24, consider to take appropriate action regarding executive session. Anybody have anything else to bring up at this time? Hearing or seeing no one get to the floor. It is 9:48. We stand adjourned.